Councilmember Case?
I'm here.
Councilmember Harvey?
Here.
Councilmember LaBarre?
Here.
Councilmember Sonier?
Here.
And Councilmember Sawyer?
Here.
Thank you.
Thank you Suzanne, if everybody would please join me in the Pledge of Allegiance. [INAUDIBLE] 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 Okay, we are on Agenda Item Number Three and turn it over to our City Manager Darren Tangeman.
So, our first Agenda Item is to recognize our Veterans Local Government Management Fellows that we've had in the past cohort, just to give an overview of the program before I let Cindy Kip explain, uh, the, yeah Cindy Kip and Laura, we're gonna talk about it as well, about their experiences with the city. Um, the fellowship is a sixteen to twenty week fellowship as military service members are transitioning from the military in their last hundred and eighty days. It gives them an opportunity to get hands-on experience in local government and meet and learn more about local government so that they can have an effective and an easier, essentially easier transition. Um, the program is now a national program. Uh, Woodland Park has been participating for about the last eight months and with the addition of Chris and Steve, we've also had Eric Dismen, and now we have three additional, three additional fellows that are now getting ready to serve in Cohort Eighteen Zero Three with the city. Um, and so I'm gonna bring up Cindy and Laura and have them talk about their experiences with Steve and Chris, and then we have their certificates of appreciation or completion for the program that we want to present to them.
Thank you.
Good evening, me or Levy and councilmembers. So you know, a couple of months ago, I was standing up here and I introduced Steve Varner to you. Um, he started with us on May twenty-first. Um, when Sally said to me, Cindy, do you wanna have an intern? I was kind of nervous. I was like, oh, I don't know, what do I do with an intern? So, but we interviewed him. He was interested in outdoor recreation, so I thought, oh, well, I can probably keep him pretty busy in that field. So what we started him off with doing is, um, working with our community events. He helped with, I think his first week, it was the last year of school celebration, he barbecued and served food to the kids at the event. Um, and then he participated in the Teen Center Outdoor Recreation Event at the Canmont Institute. He also, um, chased baseballs around the baseball field for Rocky Skills Challenge. He ran our Splash in December Volleyball Tournament for us. And then he and his lovely wife Lee, um, handed out water to the runners during the Mayor's Cup. Uh, he made a significant difference in all of these events. Another event that he made a huge significant, significant difference in is the Old Fashioned Fourth of July. This year, he came to the table and volunteered a command center for briefing and assignments of the volunteers. Um, he was invaluable in providing direction in, um, in the midst of the many moving parts. So any of you that know or have been part of that Fourth of July event, you know there's so many things going on at all times. Um, his, um, wife Lee helped out with that too. She coordinated volunteers and I believe she served breakfast burritos to all of us volunteers. So between Steve and his wife, they have contributed so much just to our events in town. Administratively, I am so grateful to have Steve. He helped me out tremendously this summer in the Parks and Recreation Office. Um, the park board started an update of the Parks Trails and Open Space Master Plan in two thousand seventeen, and the goal was to have all those updates completed in eighteen. Well, with everything that was going on in Parks and Recreation, I just didn't ever see that window opening up to get those updates done. Thankfully, Steve was able to take that PDF file, turn it into a Word document that could be manipulated. He did research, he did, let's see, um, he researched trends, updated data, and incorporated all the changes into the Parks Trails and Open Space Master Plan, and that project is now going to the Board next Wednesday for approval, so it's been completed. He's, he did a great job with getting that done. He was also instrumental in developing the mobile vendor policy for, um, mobile vendors in our parks. He worked with the Planning Department and the TUP process, coordinating that all together, so it was just like one-stop shopping for our customers. When the policy was completed, Steve utilized his public relations skills to help our community understand the process and the procedures. Um, one of the other big projects that he and Chris worked on was the Dog Park and laying out that site plan. Um, and I know that I've missed projects because we kept him busy the whole time, but, um, just know that everything that he, um, had for a project, he took on with great pride. And so without speaking for Steve, I believe he has met his objective, which was to educate and develop himself on local government departments and to use that to secure a position as he transitions out of the military. His preference was to work in Parks and Recreation. Well, in July, Steve was interviewed for the Parks, um, Parks Buildings and Grounds Crew Chief Position. He was offered this position, he accepted, and he began working as a full-time city employee on September fourth. Steve comes to the city with solid leadership and strong administration, and I welcome you to our team.
Thank you Cindy. I'd like to introduce, for the benefit of council and everyone else here, Mr. Christopher Hall. If you could stand up, and do you wanna come over here? Thank you. Um, that's Christopher with a K, known to us as Chris. Chris is a nine-year US Army Veteran in biomedical maintenance from the six-hundred-and-twenty-seventh Hospital Center at Fort Carson. He has a Bachelor of Science degree in kinesiology, pre-health sciences, my, um, pre-health sciences, and a minor in psychology from the California Polytech State University in two thousand and five. I've sat in numerous meetings with Chris. We made him go do allotted meetings, but in the weekly Planning Department meetings, for instance, Chris educated the entire department on the difference between sterilization and sanitization. So if this Board is interested, if this council is interested, please ask Chris, because I'm not sure I can repeat the difference correctly. At any rate, as a participant in the Veterans Local Government Management Fellowship Program, Chris has been working in the Planning and Building Department. During the last three months, several of Chris's projects included transportation. He became familiar with all the prior studies on the reliever route, so he dipped his toes into that issue. He attended Pike's Peak Area Council of Government Meetings and helped draft the call for projects for the two thousand forty-five Pike's Peak Region Long Range Transportation Plan. He also worked on a parking lot inventory, which included documenting the size and condition of the approximately eighteen parking lots we have in the city, and he created a priority list for striping, resurfacing, curb and gutter repairs. He visited every single parking lot, and I would dare to say he went to every single parking space. He also, as Cindy mentioned, worked on the Dog Park and will be here on November first for that public hearing in support of Bianca Bryant, who will make, be making that presentation for the Dog Park. He inventoried all the building permit storage boxes between the nineteen eighties and nineteen nineties. Can you think of anything more fun? He did some sign permit scanning for us. He did researching on various numerous zoning codes and, um, also worked on promotions for the Aquatics Center. Chris became familiar with the overall local government operations and policies by attending numerous staff meetings, project review meetings, tours, and visits to different facilities. We have several great, we have had several great discussions with Chris regarding leadership styles, group dynamics, negotiation skills, and how to work efficiently and effectively. He has been invaluable to the planning and department team and appreciate every minute of his time. Thank you.
I'd like to have Steve and Chris come up and just say a few comments about your experience, uh, and then we'll award your certificates and talk about it.
Uh, my experience with Woodland Park City has been fabulous. The people, um, of this city really care, the people, the staff, uh, everybody I've worked with, everyone really cares about what they're doing and the benefit for the city. And it's been a pleasure to get to know them, excuse me, and to work with them and now become a part, uh, a member of the team. And, uh, I'm very thankful for Cindy, for everything she provided. Sally and Laura, I've worked with them for a few days, and, um, Kip, I've been working with him here for the last several weeks as the Parks Building and Grounds Crew Chief, and just glad to be part of the team now.
Welcome.
Thank you.
Can't top that. Um, you're pretty awesome Steve. So, I, I just wanna say, um, for me, the experience was an honor. It was, it was an absolute honor. Um, I learned a lot. You know, I, I had nine years in the military and Steve had thirty, and I got picked for this position, and it was fantastic. The, the city cares so much. Um, one of the things that I, I left with that was probably, that I can boil it down to, the most profound thing is, is the heart that the city staff has, the decisions you make for the citizens, what you do, um, to keep a city running is fantastic. It's just, it's, it's very hu, it's very humbling. So, thank you for allowing me to be a part of it, and I see a very bright future with Darren Tangeman as the City Manager, because he's the creator of this program, and it's only gonna get bigger, and it's, it's a wonderful opportunity for veterans, so, thank you for, uh, for everything. Thank you.
Alright, as you notice, both of them are wearing beards now. They're not exactly, they're not transitioned fully out of the military, so hopefully they don't get called in. But, uh, anyway, what I'd like to do is just, uh, read their certificates and, and air.
Right ahead.
So. First Steve, uh, this is certificate of completion to Steve Varner and recognition, Varner, in recognition of your successful completion of the Veterans Local Government Management Fellowship and serving the city of Woodland Park for Cohort Eighteen Zero Two, uh, from May fourteenth to August thirtieth, two thousand and eighteen. Thank you Steve, appreciate it. Chris, this is to Christopher Hall in recognition of your successful completion of the Veterans Local Government Management Fellowship and serving the city of Woodland Park, Colorado from Cohort Eighteen Zero Two, for the same time, May fourteenth to August thirtieth, two thousand and eighteen. Congratulations.
Awesome.
I just wanna say that this, these, uh, this program is sponsored by, not only, it's sponsored by ICMA, International City County Management Association, the Colorado City County Management Association, and Engage in Local Government Leadership. Two national organizations sponsor this program. A lot of different benefits, uh, to each one of the fellows that serve, including some online training and, and membership that helps them immensely in their transition. I just wish you guys the best of luck. I know, I know it's not easy to transition out of the military, especially after thirty years, it's much, even much more difficult. Uh, and I hope this program allows you to have a successful and easier transition than you would have without.
Great. Darren, thanks very much. First, I, I'd like to thank Darren, because he's not the brainchild, but he's the one that brought the leadership for this fellowship program. Um, he sees the value, now we see the value, and this is the proof, um, if you will. So, let's give a hand to Darren Tangeman for bringing this to our. Then, of course, it's my honor and on behalf of City Council, certainly on behalf of everybody in this room, and on behalf of our citizens, I want to present you with the mayor's pin. And, um, you know, the things you've done have been amazing. Um, the things you've said mean so much to all of us, and so we thank you, we wish you the best of luck in the future. We thank you for your service. Steve, looking forward to working with you, and Chris, maybe we can find you a job someday. Who knows? There you go. Congratulations. Thank you very, very much. Really appreciate it. Thank you Steve. You bet. Thank you.
Chris, did find a job, he's gonna actually, he's working with UC Health, uh, and so just let you know, he's gonna be in and out of Woodland Park, uh, for the next couple of years doing that.
Excellent. Super.
Okay, that was great. Thank you very much. We'll move on. Uh, proclamation declaring October Art Month in Andy Vick.
Mr. Mayor, Member of Council, uh, good evening. Thank you for the opportunity to be here. My name is Andy Vick. I'm the Executive Director of the Cultural Office of the Pike's Peak Region. We are the, whoops, we are the local arts agency for El Paso and Teller Counties. Our job is to support and promote, uh, art in our region and to support the artists and arts organizations that are creating art in our region. I'm here tonight to ask for your, uh, proclamation in support of Arts Month. Arts Month is a national initiative that started back in the eighties at the presidential level. Five years ago, our region started its own local Arts Month initiative to support and promote and advocate for arts and culture in our community. The whole concept is to encourage folks to get out and enjoy cultural experiences during the month of October in particular, but of course throughout the year as well. Uh, the specific call to action is to have one new cultural experience with your family or friends. And we say that because studies have shown that if you are not familiar with arts and culture, one of the best ways to get you engaged is to have an invitation from someone you trust, a family member or a friend, and to make it a social experience. So that's what we're asking folks to do during the month of October and throughout the year. For us, Arts Month happens throughout the entire month of October. We break it into four different weeks based on themes to try to facilitate the marketing effort. But everything for Arts Month, it winds up at peakradar.com/artsmonth. Peak Radar is our region's cultural calendar. We create a special landing page at that URL. This is what the, uh, landing page looks like, at least the top part of it. You can find more information about Arts Month, figure out how to get engaged, and then most importantly, if you scroll down, you will see a list of cultural events that are happening in our region throughout the month of October. And this year, we had at the beginning of the month, over three hundred cultural events happening throughout the Pike's Peak Region that really speaks to the volume of creativity and arts and culture that is thriving throughout the area. Uh, our job at the cultural office is to generate funds to promote Arts Month and to drive people to that URL. We do, uh, radio, television, we're advertising in the Courier, we're, uh, social media, posters, um, all kinds of things, whatever we can do to raise awareness for arts and culture. The other thing I do is what I'm doing right now, which is to go out to all the municipalities and counties throughout the Pike's Peak Region and ask for a formal proclamation from our elected officials. This, I am pleased to say for my own benefit, is my eighth and final proclamation. Uh, it's a lot of work getting up and down the mountain and getting around to all the meetings, but I want to thank Suzanne for setting this up and for inviting me to be a part of this meeting this evening. Uh, and I will ask you, if you don't mind, Mr. Mayor and any members of council, to snap a photo if I may, because we're gonna do some social media with that once I've got all eight in the can. Uh, we had a great party this past Friday. I'm sorry, this proclamation is after, uh, the party, but we kicked off Arts Month with a, uh, little event with, uh, about a thousand of our closest friends in downtown Colorado Springs at the Mining Exchange, where we celebrated local arts and culture and showcased a lot of the talent across the region. Uh, tomorrow is our next big event, which is the Business and Arts Lunch, which we'll do at the Antlers Hotel, also in downtown Colorado Springs. We're expecting about four hundred people to this ticketed event, where we celebrate creative innovative intersections between arts and the business community and recognize, uh, this year, five businesses that have really embraced arts and culture as a tool for their companies. We're also doing a lot of other special programming in the interest of time I will skip right through. Uh, and then I will pretty much wrap up and ask you or explain to you why I think this is relevant. I think that arts and culture is relevant because there is a huge economic impact to our region. A hundred and fifty-three point three million dollars in annual economic impact from the nonprofit arts and cultural sector. That's ticket sales, that's buying lumber, if you're a theater company to build a set, or if, uh, the U-Pass Cultural Center needs to, uh, replace a light bulb to pay an electrician. Those are all things that feed our economy. It drives income for this community, for this region, and that's part of why arts and culture is so important. It's also about creating an environment where we can attract and retain talent that is going to be employed by our business community. And lastly, for those of us who live in this region, uh, it's about quality of life. We know that, uh, young people who have an arts experience, especially in K-12, will be better learners, more likely to succeed, more innovative, more creative. It's a huge help to them. For our, for those of us who are adults, it's about entertainment, and it's about bringing people together for community, whether that's an art festival or a theater performance. Anytime you can bring people together to interact in a positive way, that's a good thing for our community, and I might say that that is especially important in this, uh, national climate where there's so much divisiveness. So I think arts and culture has a super important role to play. That's why we're very, uh, excited about Arts Month. Uh, I'll leave you with a couple of URLs and, uh, hashtags for those of you who are, uh, social media folks, to share what you're doing culturally, to get out and have a new cultural experience with your family or friends during October, and support the arts locally here in Woodland Park and throughout the region. We think it's really important. Uh, that's our job, and, uh, that's what Arts Month is all about. I'll be happy to answer any questions you might have, uh, and then I would ask you again, Kip has volunteered to take a photo on my Archaic camera, uh, with a final proclamation, should that be approved.
Well, Andy, let's read the proclamation first, and then we'll take some pictures. Council, do we have any questions? What did I see? Okay. Proclamation, October is Arts Month in the Pike's Peak Region. Whereas the month of October has been recognized as National Arts and Humanities Month by thousands of arts and cultural organizations, communities, and states across the country, as well as by the White House and Congress for more than two decades. Whereas the arts and humanities embody much of the accumulated wisdom, intellect, and imagination of humankind. Whereas the arts and humanities enhance and enrich the lives of every American, including those of us living in the Pike's Peak Region. Whereas the arts and humanities play a unique role in the lives of our families, our communities in our country. Now therefore be it resolved that I Neil Levy, by virtue of the authority vested in me as Mayor of the City of Woodland Park, do by hereby proclaim October as Arts Month in Colorado's Pike's Peak Region, and call upon our citizens to celebrate and promotes the, and promote the arts and culture in the city of Woodland Park, and to specifically encourage the greater participation by those said citizens in taking action for the arts and humanities in the community. Thank you very much. Kip, are you ready to put your photographer hat on? Andy, who do you want in this picture?
Uh, I would welcome anyone who, uh, would like to be part of the proclamation.
Why don't you come with me and stand over here and, and Kip can do it. Everybody else can sit where they're at. That'd probably be easiest. If you can get us off, will that work?
Just roll.
Roll together. Thank you.
Thank you.
You got us. There we go. Forget about it.
One more.
One more?
Did you want my phone?
Thank you. I do have a phone, but I like that old guy.
Yeah.
Thanks. I've not seen a turquoise camera before. Okay, we'll move on to update on CIF Community Investment Fund and Darwin Nakarado.
Good evening. I'm Darwin Nakarado, four ten Craig Court, here in Woodland Park. And that's the only address I have. I regret that I was not here, not be, not able to make it back. Um, had to be in Denver for a three o'clock, which turned out to be a three-thirty appointment today, so, here I am. What you see is what you get. So if you discussed anything with regard to community investment in the work session, I'm afraid I don't know what that is, so I may be behind the power curve just a little bit.
And let me assure you, we did not.
I, I appreciate it. Thank you very much.
I gave a few words about the, some of the preliminary thoughts, so it shouldn't be different from what you say. Unless it is.
Well, I apologize if it is, Mayor. Mr. Mayor, uh, council, staff, um, I'm representing the Community Investment Committee here this evening, and I wanted to have a bit of a discussion, or at least a presentation about community investment in general, before we spend an awful lot of time, a lot, an awful lot of people's time, uh, completing applications and so on and so forth, wanted to find out that, wait a minute, we might not have any money for them anyway. So, I wanted to make a few comments about that. Community investment really is operating under a resolution that was presented by, uh, former Mayor Gary Crane in two thousand and eight. We've made no changes to that for the last ten years. The committee believes, and our belief staff as well, that it's perhaps time to take a revisit of that resolution at least, and make sure that we're operating, um, under the right, what the military used to call CSMO. Now, your average soldier would call that a collect you and move out, but it's really a command station march order. Anyway. We think it's, actually behooves us to prepare a formal bylaws for the Community Investment Committee, that we would like to do with your blessing, and hopefully present something at the next council meeting. Because if we are to change some of the parameters for how we operate, we'd sure like to have council on board before we do it. Some of the things that we want to think about are the philosophy of community investment in general. This is something that I know the council and, frankly, I have struggled with for a long time. Um, there are certainly things that improve the quality of our community and create a sense of community. There are events that have a measurable return on investment. It won't be easy to measure, but it is measurable for the community. Andy Vick presented a hundred, nine-hundred-and-fifty-three point three million dollars worth of return for arts in the region. And I don't think we could make that in Woodland Park. But ours is similar. About twelve years ago, prior to the creation of this committee, um, one councilman, in general, in specific, rather, felt that the committee should only, or the council should only recognize events that have immeasurable ROI in monetary. And so I was able at that time to find a similar report that had just been issued for El Paso County, not for Teller County, and that was over a hundred million dollars, and that was twelve years ago. And that was created by the National Endowment for the Arts at the behest of the, um, council and, um, commission in Colorado Springs. I'm not saying that those are the only types of events we should look at, but I'd like to see a, perhaps a different bucket for those kinds of events. There are certainly, you know, I don't really wanna list them off, because I don't wanna taint the pole, so to speak, but there are events that are big enough that we know they actually create a monetary return to the city in the form of taxes and so on and so forth. And there's a, there's probably six to ten that I could list off the top of my head that should be considered for that. I'm not so sure, and I know I'm gonna get a lot of rocks thrown at me, I'm not so sure that taking taxpayer money and turning it around and donating it to charitable organizations on behalf of the taxpayer who's decided that he does or doesn't want to himself, is philosophically the right thing to do. Lord knows, I would, you know, I donate to almost every one of those charities myself, and I would certainly bend over backwards personally to see them funded however they need to be funded. I just question whether it's the right thing for the city to do with taxpayer money. And I'm stopping short of saying, let's just don't do it, because I think some of those things are a quality of life kinda thing, and a community sorta thing, and it just takes a little bit more thought than just throwing some, something at you off the top of my head. You know, a famous economist talked about, off the top of his head, by replying to reporters' extemporaneous question, there are two considerations when you're spending money. There's a cost consideration and a quality consideration. And then he outlined a quadrant. And then he outlined a quadrant as to which one of those things both or mean are important. So if you're using your money to buy something for yourself, you care about the cost and you care about the quality, right? Clearly so. If you're spending your money on someone else, you probably still care about the cost and you may care about the quality, but not quite so much. It's a little bit farther down. If you're spending others' money on yourself, hey, I don't care about the cost, I just care about the quality. And lastly, what governments tend to do, spending other people's money on other people, in which case you don't care nearly as much about cost or quality, perhaps. And I don't think that's true here in Woodland Park. I think we care about every bit of it. I think we care about every penny of it. And I've seen that happen. But I just think it's worth sort of thinking about how we spend money in those terms. I also know that probably the highest priority we have this year for the budget process is restoring the reserves. And I certainly am not blind to that, having been a CFO most of my life and having taught economics and finance for a long time. So I'm definitely sensitive to what we're going to do with community investment this I've mentioned the bylaws. I really would like to ask Counsel, I've seen something developing over the last couple of years that is a little bothersome to me. I know one organization, for example, that a few years ago probably didn't quite get what they expected from community investment. Long before the next year they didn't apply. And then I found out it was because they came directly to Counsel and got about four times, literally half what community investment was for that whole year, directly. So I'd like to ask Counsel to please, you can't stop people from requesting, I understand that, but I would like to see you route them through Community Investment Committee for all nonprofit requests. And I know that one of the bylaws changes that we would probably have to install is that we'll have at least quarterly or as needed meetings of the Community Investment Committee rather than a couple at the end of the year and sort of knock it all out once. You know, if people have requests that are really worthwhile and that we want to do, you can't put them off a whole year to get the funding. So it would require more meetings, more sessions of Community Investment Committee. We're willing to do that. I think I pretty much knocked out the other events that I, the other issues that I wanted to mention. I do think that, excuse me, I'm losing my voice, I got too much going on today. There are organizations perhaps, there may be signature organizations as well, so when I said signature events, there may be some things that Counsel decides are worthwhile for the city to sponsor. Well, that needs to be considered in this overall discussion as well. Maybe we want to have Main Street or something, you know, those applicants, that's a nonprofit the way I see it, probably should be routed through Community Investment, as should Chamber or whatever else that we, we're still a recommending body. So it doesn't take the authority away from City Council, hopefully it takes something off in terms of workload and we would have reviewed that, make recommendations to Counsel. Heck, I don't know, maybe the community band, I don't know, we seem to have them performing a lot of different functions, maybe that's something that we ought to consider as a signature sort of thing or a community sort of thing that we want to have. The reason I sort of bifurcate this and say some of these things, these events and organizations should be considered, whatever you want to call them, I've been calling it signature events since I served on the Marketing Task Force for this city several years ago and we thought about it and that's just how we referred to it back then. The reason I'm saying that is that maybe we ought to have a separate bucket in the budget that says, this is the budget for those events for this year. And I don't know, maybe we have them apply again every year, maybe we don't, maybe we say, wait a minute, it's silly, you're doing the same thing every year, why do we put them through the effort of creating a new application? Maybe we want them to, maybe we don't. But that's something that we'll have thought through before the next, before we present about the bylaws, at least what our recommendation would be as a committee.
Darwin, what do you need from us?
I just need your consensus is that that's the direction that you'd like us to follow up and pursue and prepare bylaws along those lines.
Counsel have questions? What you're proposing is all nonprofits that want to receive monies from the city, receive those monies through the Community Investment Fund?
Yes, sir.
Apply. Apply to the Community Investment.
Yeah, apply. And then Community Investment would include them in the recommendation that it makes the City Council. Now it changes the budget maybe from one pocket to the other, maybe from one bucket to another.
The main of the budget stays the same, saves the city some money.
They very well do that.
I don't know that we'll make that decision today. We need to talk about it. We got full agenda tonight. I appreciate your coming forward. We're going to have a work session next Wednesday or Thursday. That might be an opportune time for us to discuss it. Appreciate your insight and then if we do have that meeting, maybe it'd be an opportunity for you to come and answer questions if that makes sense.
Mr. Mayor, I just have a quick question for Darwin.
Yes, ma'am.
On the bylaws, there's a council liaison, right?
Yes.
And do they hold voting power?
Yes, they do.
Okay.
It's a little bit different, I think, than some of the other recommending bodies. The way we were set up from that resolution back in '08 was that there would have been at least one council member. We started with two because the mayor himself, Gary, was here. Crane was a committee member along with, I believe, John DeVoe at the time. So we actually had two council members on it, a staff member, which is usually the city clerk, and then representatives from arts groups, charitable organizations, and a member at large. That sort of makes up the group at this point. I don't know if that still makes sense, but I think it probably does.
Is it necessary for Counsel to have voting power as a liaison?
Because of the nature of the way that that committee's set up, yeah, I would like that.
Thank you.
I would recommend it.
But ultimately, as has been pointed out, the Counsel votes on recommendations as a Counsel.
Absolutely.
And makes the appropriation.
I'm just a little leery whenever Counsel is a liaison to a board and they also have voting power. I'm not sure the weight of that is fairly balanced, so.
Like DDA?
Yeah.
And also Main Street. If you want to get down in the grass, also Main Street. And if I have voting powers, I refuse to vote unless there's a tie and I have to vote on a tie, period.
That's good.
End of story. That's the way it should be in all the bodies.
It's a recommending agency, so it's really.
Just a thought.
Counsel's.
But, Mr. Mayor, are we giving Darwin the go-ahead to craft a new set of bylaws and then bring them back to us?
I don't know what the process, I'm sure that's probably the way to go. Once you do that, bring it back to us and we'll review it and go from there. Our next, our next meeting will be Wednesday or Thursday, possibly you could have it crafted by then.
I will certainly do my best to try to get that done.
Okay. Thanks for being here, Darwin.
Absolutely.
Appreciate your hard work. How long you been on the committee?
Since, 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 since inception.
Eleven years.
Yeah. It's actually been a long time to see it work smoothly. And it has, I'm not, I don't want to misconstrue any of what I've said this evening to imply that it hasn't been fairly, pretty smooth operation for the last many years. I just think it's time to refocus when we're budget constrained and trying to build reserves and so on and so forth.
Thank you.
Thank you.
My pleasure. Okay, we have no additions, deletions, or corrections. Move on to the consent calendar and Suzanne?
Thanks, Mayor Levy. This evening we have two items on the consent calendar. One is the minutes of the September 20th council meeting and the second item is to approve the contract with CDOT for the Safe Routes to Schools sidewalk project, which I know you've heard a lot about. Kip is here to answer any questions you may have regarding that.
Counsel?
Do you have any presentation or just?
No.
Take it or leave it. Thanks.
Laura? There was a memo sent out with the packet and it did include a brief analysis and synopsis of the 76-page IGA for the grant, so that was included in the packet. I can go over some of those items if you'd like, Councilmember Carr.
How about me? Just because we have the grant for the amount of money, my understanding is we don't have to use all the money if the bids come in lower and therefore our matching of the $80,000 or whatever would also decrease. Is that a correct statement?
Currently, the grant would be for $240,000 and $200, $240,000 and that's, comes with a 20% local match of $60,000. So I would imagine that we have the ability, if it comes in, the expenditures come in at less than $240,000, we could reduce our match. But I would have to defer to the language in the contract.
I agree.
That's typically how the grant programs work. It's a matching percentage requirement, so it's a percentage of the total project is the match for the local government.
His question was if it's less than the 240, does the match go down too? So that'd be good information for us if you could find that out.
No, that's correct. It's an 80/20 and if the cost of the project decreases, then the city's match amount decreases as well. And just remember you approved a supplemental appropriation, you know, several months ago to take into account the cost of the, I mean, the city's match was already budgeted, you approved the grant amount.
That's correct. I was just having conversation.
Any other questions for Laura? If not, we need a motion to approve the consent calendar.
I'll move to approve the consent calendar.
Second?
The second. Suzanne?
Thank you. Carr?
Yes.
Case?
Yes.
Harvey?
Yes.
LeVar?
Yes.
Levy?
Yes.
Soynier?
Yes.
Sawyer?
Yes.
Thank you. Motion carries unanimously.
Suzanne, I'm on public comment and I don't have a sheet. Do we have anybody to sign up tonight?
I apologize, Mr. Mayor.
That's okay. Anybody sign up? Good.
First is Elijah Murphy wants to start.
I'd love to. Thank you.
Elijah Murphy, 204 West Midland Avenue, Woodland Park, Colorado. Good evening, Mr. Mayor, Counsel, Mr. Tangeman, State, City Staff. First off, I'm going to tag on one item. The, one of the things, we talked about the Community Investment Fund and I brought this up at the last Main Street meeting. I was recently approached by a friend of mine who was also the founder of the Grand Beret Foundation and he was discussing people's giving habits and saving habits and spending habits. And these days, people who are well-to-do no longer wish to just give their money away and donate it, they want to see it in endowments. And that is one of the things that I was considering when I was talking at the Main Street, last Main Street Board meeting, was how would we establish something like that? If we take a lesson out of history, the Al Pomar Foundation, one of our local outfits, they literally have billions, or well, they have millions of dollars, I know, I don't know whether they're up to billions yet, but they do so much good. As opposed to taking the government route of giving and spending or taxing and spending, consideration for an endowment for the city. We've got the silver tidal wave coming along here and we're going to have a lot of people who, I've been wrestling with this, who am I going to leave all my stuff to? And there are people out there who want to do that, who want to leave their stuff to an endowment. That's something that could possibly be looked at for the future to promote the arts, to promote, to work with Main Street and everything, okay? One of the things that we, I worked with a number of the businesses under the Main Street guys and we've gotten excellent results from it, was we produced a commercial and we fielded it. We did over 450 commercials in the last month promoting Woodland Park. We had a public safety message from Sheriff Michael and we promoted four businesses. Those commercials cost us, and they were between 5:00 AM and midnight, okay, on a whole bunch of channels, but they cost us 33 cents per spot.
It was a great commercial.
I'm getting ready to do one for my own business. Well, mine was on it, but I'm going to be selfish on this one or maybe work with one other business owner and maybe promote the Uden a little bit more. But if people want to come and see me, business owners, I am more than happy to work with them to help get these commercials out there promoting Woodland Park and the businesses in Woodland Park, okay? Last item, starting the 20th of October 2018, we will have the first monthly Veterans Breakfast at the historic Uden. It will go from 8:00 AM till 10:00 AM. It's not just veterans invited. Mr. Tangeman, there's a pool of bodies that will be there for you to come and recruit for city government. It's going to be a get-together to network and provide, you know, work with people, but I'm going to provide a $5 breakfast for the veterans that show up if they care to eat, but it's going to be a networking session. And anybody's invited naturally, of course, to come and recruit veterans or anything like that. But I am going to, like I said, we're just going to make it, start beginning networking thing and it will be the third Saturday of every month between 10:00 AM or 8:00 AM and 10:00 AM. So I have to take that last hour between 10:00 and 11:00 to get ready for our regular lunch schedule. So, thank you very much.
Thank you.
Thank you.
It's awesome.
Okay, Tony Perry.
So I wasn't going to speak, but actually sitting here in the budget process inspired me and then Mr. Darwin, I didn't want him to take rocks by himself. So I think, first of all, I'd like to say that the committee, the CIF committee, seems to be going on a good path. I like their thought processes, I like how they're thinking, but I'm going to focus in on a principle that Darwin alluded to and that is that citizens are fully capable of supporting the organizations of their choice. The idea that we take tax monies and have a committee decide the redistribution seems counterintuitive. Our citizens and businesses are extremely generous and I think the nonprofits will adapt and find creative ways to fund their missions. And I don't say that lightly. Our Community Investment Fund is frankly five times larger than the city's. And I, we deal with all of these nonprofits, all these organizations, lots of great events. And I really, you know, the budget process inspired me to say that the discretionary CIF should seriously be considered because I tell you all 10 of those recommendations from Counsel are relevant and I would suggest that you should seriously consider the CIF. The community will step up, we will step up, I promise you that on the donation side. But 6 through 10 are very important and I think you should take that into account. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thanks very much. Okay, I don't have anyone else signed up. Anybody else would like to speak today? This is your chance. No, we will move on. No unfinished business, no ordinances on initial posting, so we'll move on to public hearings and approving ordinance number 1335 and Kip Wiley.
Thank you. Ordinance 1335 is to vacate a 20-foot wide public utility easement located on a portion of. of Lot 1 at the Reserve at Bridlewood, as requested by Alvin and Roberta Born, the property owners. I went into some detail on this on initial posting. I still have those maps if you'd like me to bring those up. Otherwise, I'll just give you a quick description. This was the fir... There was a sewer easement, excuse me, platted for sewer main on Lot 1 for future extension. That easement is no longer needed. The sewer main has been installed and in use in another portion of the lot, which you accepted the grant of easement on at the last council meeting. This is just a public hearing for that vacation of the 20-foot easement and I recommend approval of ordinance 1335. Any questions?
Thanks, Kip. This should be an easy one. We haven't had any questions last week. If we have none, we'll just call for a motion to approve...
It is a public hearing.
I'm sorry. Is this a public hearing?
Oh, we do have to be mindful.
Step forward and speak on ordinance 1335 and vacating the lot line? Okay, if not, counsel?
So moved.
Second.
Thank you, Suzanne.
Case?
Yes.
Harvey?
Yes.
LeVar?
Yes.
Levy?
Yes.
Sonnier?
Yes.
Sawyer?
Yes.
Carr?
Yes.
Thank you. Motion carries unanimously.
Thank you, Suzanne. Item number 9B is QJ issue, so I will read the following announcement. "Council members use electronic devices to access the materials relevant to the public hearing before us. Be assured that it is common practice of this city council that these devices are not being used for texting, emailing, or other communications during the public hearing."
Mayor Levy?
Yes.
Before we begin, the city attorney has asked me if we can just go through, last time we spoke about this, the different council members disclosed their relationships that they have with the Saddle Club, or their interest in this, if they can disclose that before we start the hearings again.
Let's do that.
I am no longer a member.
Mr. Sawyer, okay, I'm sorry.
Uh, nothing. I have no ties to the Saddle Club.
Okay.
I have friends.
Thank you, Laura.
It is. You should.
I think so.
I have no ties.
Same speech I gave twice before. I do the rodeo on this grounds that doesn't exist anymore.
And I have no ties, so.
Thank you.
Thank you very much. And Laura?
Thank you, Mayor Levy, members of council. I'd like to introduce Eric Smith, who is the applicant for this development case. He will present his case and then I will present my review and analysis.
Thank you, Laura, Mr. Mayor, members of council staff. Eric Smith, 750 East US Highway 24, Woodland Park, Colorado. Also in attendance tonight is Mr. Chuck Mahoney. Chuck represents the Saddle Club and is the owner representative as well. So this is something that you heard a few months ago as it relates to the self-storage project. So tonight, we are simply looking to have the final plat approved so that we can move forward with the development. So the conditional use permit was approved by Planning Commission or recommended for approval May 24, July 19, approved by city council. Final plat application is what's before you tonight. The project is located along, this is Highway 24, so it's west of Highway 24. The Saddle Club arena sits here. Walmart is located to the south, Safeway to the north. The final plat creates a lot that is 4.75 acres in size, along with a tract that's 1.17 acres in size. The tract is located on the west side of the property. This is Highway 24 here. This is the city's lift station, located here. This is Fountain Creek. And so Lot 1 encompasses the area that will... Where the self-storage project will be built. Tract A encompasses the creek, along with the trail that'll be built alongside the project. We did add a 20-foot trail easement, as requested by staff for the new trail. And we will share a common ingress egress easement with the property owner to the north, which is the Saddle Club, as well as to our property to the south. Complies with all the city codes and design standards, as noted in your report that staff provided you. We've addressed all of staff's comments. There are just a couple of conditions of record relative to paying sidewalk and curb and gutter fees, along with providing some access easements that we've agreed to provide to staff. And Laura will go over those in more detail. So it's short and sweet. You guys have had a long night. Happy to answer any questions that you might have. And Laura will go in much greater detail. She does a great job.
I think we're good for now, Eric. Let's have Laura and then we'll come back to you.
Thank you.
Thank you, Mayor and council. So this is final plat number 18003, the WP Saddle Club final plat application. It's a request by Chuck Mahoney, who is the Saddle Club representative, for approval of a final plat for a minor subdivision of 5.92 acres into one lot and one tract, both located on parts of government lots 2 through 4 of Section 30 Township 12 South, Range 68, with an address of 19250 Highway 24 in the Service Commercial Zone District. Tonight is October 4, 2018. It is the city council public hearing on this development case. Planning Commission had a public hearing on September 13, 2018. You'll recall, as the applicant mentioned, that this is an application that also came before you for a conditionally use permit and a site plan review for a storage facility. That came to council on July 19, 2018, went to the Planning Commission on May 24, 2018. At the council hearing for the conditionally use permit and the site plan review, council did approve this application for a storage facility. Again, this is the location. Ignore the star. It sort of traveled to the east, but the actual location for this plat is this red circle right here. And this is a vicinity map showing the entire 13-acre parent parcel. And the hatched area is the 5.92-acre part that is being platted tonight. This is an aerial photo showing the site that's being platted in red. And it shows some of the surrounding land uses and existing environmental depictions. So for instance, the 13-acre parcel goes all the way up to this yellow line, which happens to be the Teller County boundary, encompasses all of this area, the site that's proposed to be platted, and this area down below. That's the 13-acre parcel that we're looking at as the parent parcel. And this 5.92-acre parcel in red is the parent... Is the parcel that is being carved out of the parent parcel. And is where the storage facility goes. So as I said, the yellow boundary is the Teller County boundary. You can see that the creek falls within the city of Woodland Park and is within this plating that we are here discussing today. On the other side of this parcel in Teller County, you'll see A1 zone properties, agricultural zone properties, and R1 and R2 zoning on the other side of County Road 21. In the city of Woodland Park, you see the Woodland Park Lift Station immediately north and east of this particular plot. You see the highway, then as we travel east, and then Swish LA, the Elk Grove Town Homes, Tra Road, and those types of developments as you go east. Going south, you see the Woodland Village Mobile Home Park. And then further south, south, you will see Walmart. And so that gives you a general idea of some of the topography. This is our zoning map for the city of Woodland Park. The site that we're looking at today is within the Service Commercial Zone District, which is the dark purple. And the site, the five acres, is in a circle right there. Below it is the Walmart PUD. And you can see on the other side of the highway is commercial along the highway, multifamily, and then single-family residential as you go further east. These are some photos of the site. The area proposed to be platted, you'll see, is right here, pretty much the arena site for the Saddle Club. This is from the highway looking down north and west over the site. And this is from the corner of Swish LA and the highway looking south and west over the site, which is to be platted, which is this area right in here. This is another aerial, a little bit of a close-up, showing the five-acre parcel that will be platted and some of the nearest local surrounding buildings, so that you can see the Swish LA, for instance, and the residence that's associated with it is 376 feet from the proposed edge of the storage facility and some of the improvements that will go in there. The nearest residence is this mobile home, which is approximately 167 feet from the edge of the nearest building that will be constructed once this is platted. And then on the Teller County side, the homes are 400 to 500 feet away from this particular parcel.
Laura, is that one mobile home occupied?
You know, I'm not sure. Certainly there are some vacancies in this mobile home park, but I can't tell you if that one is occupied or not.
No matter.
So Laura, real quick while you have that map up, I jumped ahead a little bit to the very end where it says, "Submit fees in lieu of construction for sidewalk curbs." Where would've that sidewalk gone?
The requirement in the regulations are that fees in lieu be... Sidewalk and curb and gutter be constructed for that length of property that is adjacent to a right-of-way. In this case, the only public right-of-way is this length right here, from this corner, the edge of the city parcel, down to the edge where the mobile home park starts. That's about, oh, 100 feet?
107.
108 feet, yeah, 107 point something. And so that length is what we use to determine what the fees in lieu would be, because we don't want construction of a sidewalk adjacent to this parcel at all.
No, of course not. Okay.
It's not feasible. All right. So, one more. This is the plating that's proposed. There are two lots, one lot and one tract. So Lot 1 will be 4.75 acres and will encompass the... All of the improvements for the storage facility. Tract A is 1.17 acres, includes all of the Fountain Creek boundary. And you can see that it also includes a 20-foot-wide easement for a trail, which will be the American Discovery Trail connection. As the applicant mentioned, access is from Highway 24, coming down the CDOT right-of-way right up until this boundary of the plat, of this lot. And here, it will turn into a private road that will access this Lot 1 and will also access the remnant parcel, the remaining parcel to the north, which will be retained by the Saddle Club. So staff did a complete review and analysis of this final plat application. We did referrals to various city departments, including the Utilities Department, the Public Works Department, the Police Department, the Building Department. We also referred to external agencies, the Northeast Teller County Fire Protection District, IRE, Black Hills, and others, CDOT. We did a public notice of everyone within 150 feet. They received a letter of tonight's hearing. We did an onsite poster notifying everybody of tonight's hearing. And we did publish tonight's hearing in the Pike's Peak Courier. As I mentioned before, the Planning Commission reviewed this development case on September 13 and did recommend approval. Minutes of that meeting were attached to the packet that everyone received and you can see some of the discussion that ensued. Also, as mentioned earlier, this is in the Service Commercial SC Zone District. Just to reiterate, this SC Zone District is intended to provide commercial activity that serves local and regional community, communities, including retail, service, and office-oriented uses. It allows for large parking spaces along a major transportation corridor, with a critical, high-priority consideration given to things like the design, access control, and corridor improvement. So I'm not gonna go through all of these, but there are limitations within this Service Commercial Zone District, which the applicant will meet. And it is feasible for him to meet all of these conditions with this plating. And that will happen with the zoning development permit when he actually goes to propose his siting and his construction. We did the full review of the final plat with Title 17, the subdivision section of the city municipal code. We reviewed it with all of the general conditions, the general provisions, and it complies. The proposed subdivision is of such a character that it can be safely used for building purposes without danger to health or peril from fire, flood, or other menace. Provision has been made for drainage, water, sewage, and public improvements with this plating, and includes trails and transportation facilities. And the improvements conform to the comprehensive plan and other plans that exist, and the zoning and other regulations that exist. It complies with Section 1712, which is classifications. This is classified as a minor subdivision since there are no public improvements. It complies with the pre-application process for a plating process. They've had numerous conferences with staff relating to this proposed subdivision. And finally, it complies with all of the final plat standards as submitted, and staff has done a thorough review of the plat as it's depicted. It complies with all of the design standards. Adequate consideration has been given to the site layout, provision for roads, trails, intersections, and improvements and easements, and the lot configurations. Also complies with adequate consideration has been given to surface improvements, utilities, and other services, all related to improvements that are proposed for this lot. So based on that review and analysis, staff does recommend that the WP Saddle Club filing number one final plat be approved subject to the following conditions prior to signing and execution of the Mylar. There are three conditions, which I'll summarize. A, the applicant is to submit a letter confirming his intent to construct and install the non-motorized trail according to city specifications. That's the trail along the creek. B, the applicant is to submit fees in lieu of construction for sidewalk curb and gutter for the 107-foot-long lineal frontage along Highway 24. And that estimates to about $6,000 to $8,000, forget what it was. I think it was about $8,000 for that fees in lieu. And condition C is the applicant is to submit a private road easement and access easement for the self-remender parcel for staff review and approval prior to finding a final execution of the plat. That concludes my presentation. Mr. Mayor?
Thank you, Laura. Counsel? Carol?
Two questions on recommendations. On the construction of the non-motorized trail, is there a suspense on that in addition to the letter of intent?
Is... I'm sorry, is there a what?
A suspense for... To be built no later than?
There's no... There is none, no. There's no deadline. It will be built with the construction and all of the improvements that happened with Lot 1.
And then my second question was, where is the easement required?
Where is it shown on the plat? So on this slide, it's within Tract A. And you can see on the plat itself, it's shown as a hatched 20-foot-wide line that begins at the edge of the FEMA floodplain and goes 20 feet wide for the full length of Tract A. And cuts the little corner here on the southwest corner.
Go ahead, Bill.
Thank you. So at one point, we talked about the triangle under this, east-southeast, or whatever it is, under that, having an access for that. Somebody speak to that, maybe?
One of the conditions of the final plat approval is that the applicant submit an easement that shows the access to this parcel, this remnant parcel, and he would do that.
I see.
No, I just wanted to make sure that...
It hasn't been determined exactly where that easement will be, but he will provide that easement.
Anyone else, counsel? Public comment right now? Anybody in the audience like to comment? Okay, if not, Laura, thank you. Eric, thank you, counsel. I need a motion to approve, please.
Saddle Club filing number one as...
Second. I'm sorry.
With recommendations, please?
Thank you.
Second.
And the second. Suzanne?
Thank you. Harvey?
Yes.
Levy?
Yes.
Sonnier?
Yes.
Sawyer?
Yes.
Carr?
Yes.
Case?
Yes.
Thank you. Motion carries 6-0.
Thank you, Suzanne. Counsel, we'll grab Hillary and we'll move on to new business and number 10A, considering resolution number 834. And Tim, give us one minute while Hillary comes in and you're on. Tim Deans. Tim Deanst.
May I please address the council?
Please do. Give us your name and address or city where you live, something like that, and go from there. I'm not sure what the requirements are anymore.
Excuse me, I know you guys have had a really long afternoon, so I'll try to make this as brief as possible. My name is Tim Deanst, and I'm the Chief Executive Officer for Ute Pass Regional Health Service District. We're your ambulance service here in Woodland Park. Along with me tonight is Mr. John Genzel. He's the President of our Board of Directors for the district, so he'll be available to answer any questions as well that you might have. My objectives tonight is to give you an, to give you an idea about our district itself, why we're asking for the half a cent sales tax to support our ambulance services, and what the benefits to supporting this half a cent sales tax would be. So give you a little bit of history about the ambulance service and the scope of the ambulance service. Ute Pass Regional Health Service District used to be Ute Pass Regional Ambulance District, if you remember from years ago. Probably two years ago, we switched from an ambulance district to a health service district, primarily because healthcare is changing, and some of the payer sources, some of the services that we may need to provide in the future are changing along with that. And even as we were looking for revenue sources, one of the options that became available to us is the health service district. That was not available to us as an ambulance district is the ability to ask the residents and citizens for a sales tax. But your ambulance district is about 539 square miles. It covers all of Northern Teller County. It covers a large part of southeastern Park County, to include Lake George and the Terry area, essentially up to the summit of Wilkerson Pass to the west. It also goes down Highway 24 east to about the El Paso, well, to the El Paso County line. And we actually go north up into Douglas County and cover the West Creek area, about 36 square miles up there. Your ambulance service really is an amazing ambulance service, but one of the things you have to understand about our business is we are an essential community service, and those services that we provide to your community are non-excludable, meaning that we can't refuse service to anybody regardless of the call, regardless of their ability to pay, regardless of where they're from. You have at your beck and call some amazing paramedics and EMTs. All you have to do to get them is dial 911, providing we have them available to actually respond to your emergency. The other thing about those superior paramedics and EMTs, competition for those medics is growing, especially along the front range, and with some successful other tax initiatives from other special districts and other county ambulance services, competition is growing, and we're starting to lose some of our paramedics as we speak to some of the surrounding districts. Our paramedics and EMTs are providing outstanding patient care. If our, if your law enforcement officers are anything like our paramedics, you have some awesome law enforcement officers, and word on the street is they're awesome. But even when you think about our paramedics and EMTs, our paramedics and EMTs have to be better. They have to be quicker and smarter than the ones downtown, because on average downtown, those medics spend about maybe 30 minutes with patients. We spend on average of an hour, plus, especially if it's snowing outside and the roads are slick, we can be with patients up to two hours to two and a half hours, and sometimes even longer. They're providing outstanding patient care. Our medical director is exceptional, who has given us some very aggressive medical protocols. And one of the things I like to tout about our medical director, Dr. Jeremy DeWalle, is that he not only cares about the quality of service that we're providing to you, he actually lives in our community, which is not very common for most EMS agencies around the state, so he has a personal best interest in it as well. And we do have strong partnerships with our fire protection districts and our law enforcement agencies and our hospitals, and we're really looking forward to an expanded relationship with the new management at UC Health. You know, I kind of talked about and bragged about the quality of care you're receiving from our medics. Well, we're an award-winning service. 2011, two of our medics were awarded Star of Life in Washington DC by the American Ambulance Association, and two years in a row, 2014 and 15, our medics were awarded Paramedics of the Year by the Emergency Medical Services Association of Colorado and the Colorado Department of Public Health and Environment. And we're waiting for news anytime one of our paramedics has been nominated for Paramedic of the Year this year. We've been nominated for Ambulance Service of the Year this year, and our medical director has been nominated for Medical Director of this year. And this is a little bragging point. Our medics and our service does make a difference every single day. Here's an example of a patient who came by just three days ago to say, "Thank you for saving my life." What we're asking for you to do tonight is please pass Resolution 834, Series 2018, in support of our ballot measure 7A. So I'd like to start off with the district resident benefits, what they will receive if they pass this resolution. The first thing that they're going to receive is no balanced billing. We're going to continue to bill insurance, and whatever insurance does not pay will write off. And whatever we don't collect will become money in their pocket for downstream healthcare costs. If you think about it, and I'll get a little bit more into the reasons why we're doing this, but it relates to our paramedics, and I'll explain that in just a few moments, but actually, fewer and fewer people are being hit with needing to pay their deductible and co-pays, because 80% of our current payer mix is Medicare, Medicaid, and the uninsured. Currently, only 20% of our payer mix is from private insurance, and even insurance is paying less, leaving more and more costs for patients to pay out of pocket. And as insurance companies pay less, even the value of our district resident discount is becoming less and less. The other thing that we think that makes sense for our sales tax as opposed to a property tax increase is non-district residents pay sales taxes as well, and I'll get into why that's important in just a few moments. We're not alone. A lot of EMS agencies across the state are suffering from low revenues and high costs and the inability to provide quality service. Just recently, Chaffey County, the county-run ambulance service passed a half a cent sales tax to support their ambulance service. Just last year, Clear Creek County, another county-run ambulance service, passed a half a cent sales tax to fund their ambulance services. Why? Half cent? High non-resident consumption of their ambulance service. One more example, South Park Ambulance District, ambulance district just to the west of us, our closest mutual aid partner to the west in Fair Play, last May passed a whopping $5 mil increase to sustain their ambulance service. And there was our other examples as well. So why do we need it? Well, demand for ambulances is rising, and it is continuing to rise. As you can see, there are two lines on this chart. The top one is total calls. The bottom one is total transports. And I can tell you, going back to the top line, calls, we're already 276 calls above where we were this year at this time. And the other thing to remember about those two lines is we are a transportation benefit. We're not a healthcare benefit. So that means by Medicare, Medicaid, and even most private insurance companies, the only time we get paid for service is if we transport a patient to a hospital. That's the only time that we get paid by those payers. And so, we're running about a 50 to 55% transport percentage. So the important distinction, transports pay, calls do not. So 50% of the calls that we respond to do not call. A frequent question we get, "Why don't we charge, treat, and release?" Well, we thought about that, but as you know, we already charge a MUIV in the area, so some of those costs that are associated with the treat and release, especially for district residents, are prepaid, are already paid for by that service. The other thing that you need to know is that 40% of our call volume is concurrent. So in other words, 40% of the time, one ambulance goes on a call, another one is called. And sometimes calls are holding at the same time, and we have prolonged response times for that. When we look back and look this year, on average, eight hours of every day, there is no ambulance available in all of Northern Teller County. And as a matter of fact, you'd be amazed at how many times there aren't any ambulances available at all in Teller County, including the two in Cripple Creek, because we're busy. Now, that eight hours of every day might be broken down into 15 minutes here, 30 minutes there, an hour, two hours, so it's not all at once, but it's broken down. So my word to the, to you and the residents is, it's safe to be the first, and the second caller to 911, don't be the third caller to 911, because your closest mutual aid is either in Colorado Springs, and heaven only knows where that ambulance might be in Colorado Springs, because you know what? They're busy too. Next mutual aid is out of Cripple Creek. The next mutual aid is out of Fair Play. Ambulances are a long ways away, so we do need to add more ambulances. Last year, 60 calls went unanswered by us, and we had to have our mutual aid agency provide that service for us. And it was ironic. Our crews were going to join us tonight for this presentation, guess what? They couldn't make it because one ambulance was on a call, the other ambulance had to go centralize and divide, because both of Cripple Creek's ambulances were on calls. So with the concurrent call volume, you see, response times are worsening. Why? Because of the multiple calls that are occurring at the same time. So if there's an ambulance call in Woodland Park, if we get another call in Woodland Park, which 62% of all ambulance calls occur in the Northeast Teller County Fire Protection District and the zip codes of 80863 and 80866. So this area is the largest consumer of ambulance services. So we're running multiple calls, but look, look at what's happening. In every area except mountain communities or the West Creek area, those response times have increased. As a matter of fact, from time of dispatch to the time an ambulance is on scene, all calls in Woodland Park went from 7 minutes 29 seconds in 2008 to 13 minutes 51 seconds so far this year. Now, what's interesting is that with the past couple of months, and with a little bit of assistance from using gaming grant money, we have been adding a third car, especially during the weekends and some weeknights. Now, it's been hit miss because being able to staff that car has been very difficult because, you know what? I can't find part-time medics to staff those ambulance, that ambulance. Irony is, when we have that third car on, we have shaved off four minutes off of that response time. So imagine if we could bring that third car back, and I'll explain why that third car isn't there now, but if we could bring it back 24/7/365. So why do we need it? You know, I was at the Republicans' meeting a few weeks back, and I actually kind of joked about a comment that I was going to make to them, and even after a presentation that was made earlier. I don't have a spending problem. Well, I kind of do, but what I really have is a revenue problem, knowing that 80% of the bills we send out won't be paid anywhere as close to what it's cost to providing services. I don't have a spending problem, because everything costs money for us. If I'm buying band-aids, if I'm buying insurance, if I'm buying fuel, if I'm buying utilities, I have to pay 100% of those costs, because if I don't pay 100% of those costs, we don't get them. Problem is, is that as my expenses continue to climb, sometimes I can't get some of the stuff, like additional raises, and we haven't given paramedics meaningful raises in nearly five years, and that is soon going to catch up to us and cost us dearly in quality of care that we provide. But we're doing everything we can to cut costs. We're joining, purchasing co-ops, which gives us discounts on stuff. But even when you think of, right now, we're in a medication shortage. Some of the basic medications that you couldn't imagine, that we are having a hard time getting, epinephrine for cardiac arrest patients, epinephrine 1 to 10. I used to pay $1.28 a vial for that, but because the manufacturers aren't making it at the moment, that vial of epinephrine is costing us about $32.9. I don't even know how much longer I'm going to be able to get it. That's part of the problem. So it seems like every time you get one thing under control, something else happens, but we are cutting training and education cuts. We are cutting facility improvements as well. So this is a good one, because we literally go from a hero to goat in a matter of a postage stamp. He will, when we actually take care of a patient, goat when they get the ambulance bills. The point of this is, higher ambulance bills do not generate higher payments from the payers. As you can see from the top line, that's the average trend of the ambulance bills. We used to guess, quite frankly, on what to charge the patients on our average ambulance bills, but you notice the jump in 2016, where we came upon an actual formula for determining ambulance rates, which is based on cost per transport divided by your collection percentage. And at the moment, it's costing us about $1,700 a transport. Every time that ambulance goes out the door, 1,791, but I got that number coming up in this slide in a moment as well. Divided by our current collection percentage, 29%. Actually, we've gone from guessing, how much should we raise the bills to, to how much should we lower the bills to, because if you use that formula, it says that our average ambulance bills going out the door, even including an amount that's prepaid through the property taxes, should be right around $3,100 to $3,200. Well, you know what? I'm already getting, in some respects, tarred and feathered and about run out of town sometimes by charging so much, because people don't understand why those bills are so much. So it's really good to be able to say, though, it's no longer guessing. It's an industry standard. That standard was established by the American Ambulance Association. And I think, yes, sir?
How long do you have?
Pardon?
How long do you have with the presentation?
Just a few more moments, sir. So I think the other thing to notice is the lines down below, those are our primary payers. So the average payers that they're paying. So you see the bills are going up, no change. And this, I call the payer gap. So the top line represents the Medicare and Medicaid and private pay, uninsured. You notice that's going up? The bottom line represents theoretically the better-paying health insurance. The wider that gap gets, the worse we are for financials. So why does it matter? So average ambulance bills going out the door now are $2,709. See that 80% of our payer mix is paying 407, that's Medicare, that's with the supplemental payment, your supplemental insurance. Medicaid is $137. I can't balance bill those two groups, and Medicaid is our fastest-growing insured group. So another one, startling enough, non-district residents account for 36% of ambulance consumptions, and they don't pay their ambulance bills. Looking at it last year, $500,000 worth of uncompensated costs, not charges. So when I saw that number, we took a look and said, "Well, how much is it between 2008 and 2017?" Over $4 million worth of uncompensated costs. So not only are non-district residents consuming your ambulances when you could need them, they're consuming your tax dollars over three and a half years worth of total property tax dollars collected, and they're also causing your ambulance bills to rise. And I'll tell you, we can't really, I mean, we could raise our ambulance bills more and more and more, but we're not going to get it, and even if we rose the ambulance bills, it would cause another need to raise the ambulance bills, because the collection percentage would get worse. Remember the formula? It would make the rate go up. Doesn't make sense anymore. So property tax cuts, Gallagher worsens EMS finances as well. I know that some of you are probably familiar with the drop in the residential assessment rate, going from 7.96 where it was for years. This year, it went to 7.2%. They're actually expecting it to go down to 6.1 in the next assessment year. They're actually predicting with, through the Special District Association, even some of my contacts at the state legislature says, "Be prepared for below." even some of my contacts at the state legislature says, be prepared for below six. And so the worse that the RAR gets, the worse property tax revenue will be for the district. And this is, this slide and one more, just one ambulance. So, a lot of times, we get criticized for, all I needed was a ride to the hospital. I can't understand how much, why that ambulance bill was that amount. Well, an ambulance isn't a taxi. And so even if the vehicle itself, the four-by-four ambulance box, is two hundred and ten thousand dollars. The cardiac monitor is thirty-three thousand. And the one I'd really like to point out is the stretcher, the bed that we put you on, and we put you in the back of the ambulance. Thirty-two thousand dollars. Just a few years ago, I used to be able to buy them for six. Why can't I buy them for six anymore? Because they're now all electronic. I get it, because what we weren't paying in ambulance costs, we were paying in back injuries and shoulder injuries, because the whole manual cot, up and down, every time, in and out, we were causing injuries. But three hundred and five thousand one hundred dollars, that does not include salaries, fuel, insurance, and maintenance. That's the cost of an ambulance. I'd like to end the presentation, for the most part, to remind everybody the benefits if this passes. No out-of-pocket costs after we bill insurance. No more collection agencies for district residents. Non-district residents will still have to pay full boat. And I will say that there is one exception to the no collection agency promise. And that is if an insurance company pays a patient directly instead of us, and they don't forward that payment to us, because the benefit is after insurance pays. But if they're sent to collections, it'll only be for that amount that they were paid by insurance. I hope that makes sense. We also figured out that with this mil levy, if you spend fifteen thousand dollars in the city of Woodland Park or within the entire district, because the sales tax will be levied within the entire district, it'll cost you seventy-five dollars. Is that too much? You'll be receiving improved ambulance services, faster response times, and will continue providing superior care with outstanding paramedics and EMTs. So I'm asking you, please support us. Please support the resolution by passing it today. If you have any questions, I'd be happy to entertain them.
Boy, you were almost as good as the Western girls.
Mr. Mayor, I have a question. I just was wondering, Tim, if you have, or you and your board, have thought about asking the voters to make you whole with an increase in your mil levy that would not take any more money out of their pocket and make you whole from the reduction from Gallagher?
Okay. The Gallagher amendment is a lot of the problem. And what's interesting about that is, first of all, when you take a look at total taxes received back in 2008 versus total taxes received in 2017, I mean, even though we've been receiving taxes, we haven't received that much more money. As a matter of fact, that amount equates to forty-two thousand dollars more this year than we collected back in 2008. The other thing is that, we're going to see what happens, because I think Forest and Fire is going to be asking exactly that question on their ballot. And what they're going to be asking for is essentially a floating mil levy. Well, I don't know if you remember, back in 2006, we asked for a floating mil levy, and I know it's going to be based on a dollar amount.
Yes.
But that was soundly defeated, because we couldn't get the voters to understand what this floating mil levy was. And it wasn't necessarily based on Gallagher back then, but it was based on, we were trying to balance out the need and the cost, and we wanted to be able to lower the mil levy if we didn't need it that particular year, or raise it if we needed it another year. But it was still capped. And the mil levy, even for a Gallagher fix, would still have to be capped. You can't just go ahead and increase it. That is one thing that was included in the South Park question as well. But the other thing is that we have to be thinking of the future and the long term. By 2023, with Gallagher, we'll be living off the same property tax revenue that we received in 2008, but it'll be on 2023 expenses. If we're just trying to protect a dollar amount as our costs continue to increase, something's going to have to give. Ambulance services have to be paid for. I hope that answered your question. We did consider it. And I think that we're also going to be working at the legislature this year to try to find a Gallagher fix over the long run, because it's going to impact you. That might be something you may have to ask as well in the future. But I think that it's going to take more than that to solve the problem.
Thank you.
I'm confused on who will collect this half-cent tax. Is that collected by a city or the counties that are encompassed in the district? And if it's the city, what is our pass-through requirement? Now, when we collect the one-cent tax for the school district, that increases our obligation to tabor as well.
Councilwoman Harvey?
Yeah.
Great question. As a Title 32 special health service district, it is one of our authorities to ask for a sales tax as an entity ourselves. So we don't have to go through a county, we don't have to go through a city, like you did with the school district. So we can ask for it ourselves, and therefore levy it throughout the entire district and not just within the city of Woodland Park.
I think your question is, is the agent that's going to collect it for you? Is that the state of Colorado?
That would be the state of Colorado.
Okay, thank you.
Okay, thanks.
No Gallagher impact.
Makes it a little more powerful.
And Gallagher will not impact that.
Questions? Anybody? Understand, counsel, this is an opportunity for us to put this on the ballot and let the community decide.
Mayor, it's on the ballot.
It's on the ballot. This is support the ballot.
Yep.
No resolution, this is just a resolution. Any other questions? Tim, thanks very much.
You bet. And if you have questions, I'll stick around afterwards. I'll be happy to answer yours, or yours, or yours. Thank you very much. Have a good evening.
Thank you. Audience, any questions? Anyone like to comment? Hey, counsel?
I think we ought to let the voters decide.
They're going to, it's on the, do you want to support a resolution to support?
I make a motion to support.
I make a motion, we support it. I got one here, I'm sorry. And then we got a second from Paul. Suzanne?
Labar?
Yeah.
Levy?
Yes.
Sonier?
Yes.
Sawyer?
Yes.
Carr?
Yes.
Case?
Yes.
Harvey?
Yes.
Thank you. Motion carries unanimously.
Thank you, Suzanne. Tim, thanks very much. Good luck. Keep up the hard work. Okay, we will move on to mayor's reports. And I'm going to wait to the end and move on to council reports. And Al, do you have anything tonight?
Nothing tonight, thank you.
Kelly?
The DDA board did not meet this week. We delayed our meeting to next week, and so I have nothing to report on the DDA at this time, Mr. Mayor. Thank you.
Tuesday, the ninth?
Ninth, 7:30 here in City Council Chamber.
Thank you. Phil?
Nothing to report.
Hillary?
Nothing to report.
Mr. Sonier?
I appreciate how this was laid out. Lots of information.
What did you call the format again?
Called quad, quad chart.
Quad chart. Thank you. I like it.
Is it military-driven?
It is.
He's a PowerPoint Ranger, I can tell.
I have nothing, Mr. Mayor. But my team did one win ten-nothing.
Good. Ten-nothing.
Let's tell the rest of the story. Best record in how long?
Best record probably, wow.
At least ten years, yeah?
Close.
Yeah, good for you. Congratulations, that's awesome.
Thank you.
Okay, I just have one announcement. Thursday, October 16th, 5:30 to 7:00. Chamber Business After Hours this month will be at Fidelity. National Title and Veterans Bank will help support that, right? They're all in the same building. Okay, we have no city attorney tonight, so Darren, city manager's report.
Only thing I have is that attended the UCCS Economic Forum today. Great forum. Actually, went with Deb Miller today in the chamber. Great information. I'll pass on that, those to the city council, so you can see kind of the projections for the next few years. No projection of a recession in the near future, but it does look like a potential decline in the economy over time. Some of the concerns were potential wage, I think wage issues. So what was the term, Deb, with the wage issue? Wage, it wasn't wage inflation, but there's an increasing number of quitters, is what they call them, actually at the highest level we've had in our history, where people are looking for new jobs. And so it was, it could be impacting a lot of different industries, including public service. And so I'll pass that on to the city council, so you can see it. I'd be happy to answer any questions you have about the event.
Great, thank you. And once again, thank you, and thank you to the staff for the, for everything that you presented, how you presented it, and we had another great budget meeting, and we're right on track. So, thanks to your whole staff.
Absolutely.
Great job. Great job. Okay, I just have a couple of letters to read before we adjourn, starting with one from Woodland Park Senior Organization. That's the senior center, City Woodland Park. Dear Darren, on behalf of the Board of Directors and members of the Woodland Park Senior Organization, please accept our heartfelt thank, thanks for the timely response of the city staff to the gas leak at the senior center this week. Your staff conducted themselves in a very dignified and professional manner. The generosity of the city in opening the teen center to us older citizens was greatly appreciated. In no time at all, they had us playing games and transferred the teen center into a dining room to allow those who'd signed up for meal to be able to enjoy a balanced and nutritious meal. The City of Woodland Park can be proud of the people you have working for you. Thank you again for your generosity, Jerry Burnham, President and Board of Directors. Thank you very much. Next, from Steve Randolph, Mayor Levy and Council, City of Woodland Park. The outcome of the DDA lawsuit has been long anticipated by a number of community members who followed the proceedings. Because City Council has entrusted significant oversight to DDA Treasurer Tanner Coy, the outcome may have been unforeseen by some of the council members. This is a familiar plight that occurs when a single individual achieves disproportionate influence within a governing body, and outcomes are vulnerable to the fallibilities of a single misguided or ill-equipped member. In an article appearing in this week's Courier, elected officials are quoted as stating, quote, "It's time to turn the page, to establish a new direction," and quote, "We are happy to put this behind us and focus on a positive future." Most of us would agree with these aspirations, but without actionable directives, aspirations count for nothing. For a reason to prevail, one of you must make a motion developing a resolution that disrupts the status quo. From the outset, millions of public dollars have been invested in Woodland Station to become our businesses and urban residential center. Instead, it has become the barren view corridor to a blighted warehouse and unsightly mobile home park. For those of us who have been here and remember it, at least the doomed rodeo arena reminded us of our ranching legacy. A necessary step toward a new direction and a positive future for Woodland Parks, excuse me, for Woodland Station is for the city to reclaim ownership of the property as provided for in the 2009 document that conveyed title from the city to the DDA. The city should sell the property, unencumbered by the DDA, and place it finally on the tax rolls. But, before starting that task, you must get rid of at least the one board member most responsible for triggering the lawsuit. As has been repeatedly recommended to you and the DDA board, that member is Treasurer Tanner Coy, who not only doesn't live here, he doesn't even live in Teller County. And the results of his disproportionate influence have cost us local taxpayers around six hundred thousand dollars for legal fees and court ordered payments. That sum would go a long way toward replacing lost property tax revenues for fire and ambulance that the DDA board steadfastly refuses to allow. This moment is yours to claim or to yet again deflect for the sake of the community interests that we all share, except for Tanner. Please do not falter. Very sincerely, Steve Randolph. And that is all I have. This meeting's adjourned.